This opportunity to have you share a little bit of information about your accomplishments. I know you went to Boise State last year.
It wasn't Boise State.
Oh, it wasn't Boise State, okay.
No, it was a leadership conference down at GCU. It was the state leadership conference. It was the organization that puts it on is called the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership. And so I went to the state conference as an ambassador for Mingus. And then from there, there was some 200 or so ambassadors at that conference. Then out of those ambassadors, I was chosen to be like one of the five to go to the World Leadership Congress in Chicago, where there was over 400 different students from across the world that went there.
Amazing. And so how was that connected to the American Legion?
It's not the American Legion. It was through the school. I went to the American Legion because I would love to be able to afford to go to World. I went and asked for different.
So they helped sponsor you.
Exactly.
Okay, now I'm getting the connection.
Yeah. And actually, unfortunately, I was not able to go to Boise State because I am, since due to my outstanding experience at the leadership conference, I'm going to go back this year, starting tomorrow, actually, that I'm going to go down there and I'm going to help put on that same conference to go and give back.
Okay, excellent. Anything else? You're going to be a senior?
Yeah, I'm going to be a senior. Football, everything, education.
And then the Cottonwood Youth Advisory Commission, do you have any comments about that?
Um, I'm really looking forward to this next year, you know, senior year. I've been, I've been on it for every, since eighth grade, so I'm one of those, going to be one of the most senior members, the most senior member, I do believe, on the commission. So I really hope to put a leadership and experience towards that and hopefully run for president.
All right. Okay, well, best wishes.
Thank you.
So, would you all stand, please, for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united about, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council has a certificate for you, so I'll bring that to you. On behalf of the city council, we'd like to share this certificate with you. I think you got one last time, maybe?
Perhaps, yeah.
So you could have two.
Thank you.
I think so.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Erin.
You're welcome.
Thanks for coming and using that.
Of course.
Thank you for inviting me.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next item is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, council members, just a kind of update of how successful our, I always get it wrong, operation graduation and project graduation. This year, we had 365 participants, which is a record for us. We had a good number of people there.
Wow, because the graduating class was 280, I think.
And I guess each graduating member is allowed to bring one guest.
Wonderful, that's great.
And then we had about 50 to 60 chaperones there, so good parent participation as well. Fun time was had by all. Our summer programs are underway. Our summer reading program at the library is available. Swim lessons and summer camp at the recreation center and fire school and safe babysitter classes are available through the fire department. We have the first, hopefully, annual Tilted Earth Music and Wine Festival on June 21st, and that is moving along very well. This last weekend, we hosted, I believe this was the second of four ASA softball tournaments, and we had 16 teams from around the state. So that was great. We have some more coming up. And we just recently got a call from Clarkdale that they were running short on water, and so we accommodated them by providing them with some water from our system. We anticipate that may go on for a couple of weeks at least. And that's it, ma'am.
Glad we could help out. Okay, council members. Mr. E.
I wanted to update the council and the public on what the Historic Preservation Commission has been up to. And for those that don't know, I chair the commission. We meet once a month. And for about a year now, another commission member and myself have been discussing the idea or concept of a historic home tour in Old Town.
Wow, that would be great.
It's gaining steam, and we've talked with the Old Town Association a couple of weeks ago, and they're very interested in helping support us in any way they can. And it looks like we're going to piggyback the event on, with Walking on Main for November 8th, I believe. And we're trying to keep it as simple as possible this first year, but we do expect it'll gain momentum year after year. Certainly seems to be, you know, enough interest to sustain this, this first, this first go around. We've gone to different property owners here in Old Town, and many of them seem interested in hosting, you know, their home for the tour. And then we also want to do a tour with some of the commercial buildings here in the commercial corridor of Old Town, so.
So would there be a charge like there are like in other towns?
Yeah, yeah.
And what would you do with the funds?
Well, there would, you know, we're really just sort of planning this. You know, there's a lot of options, but the concept so far is we would certainly charge admission. It'd be, I think, probably around $25, which is pretty standard for most home tours. We're thinking of doing a wine tasting that's included with the purchase of a ticket, which we think would, of course, increase participation. And if there were any funds left over, we would like to see those funds be donated to the restoration effort of the civic center.
Ah, that's exactly what I had in my mind. I was going to ask you. What about?
It seems like a good fit, and people tend to get on board with a program when they know that there's a charity involved or a good cause involved.
I've done with it, yeah.
You know, we don't really expect it to make a ton of money, but it may make some. Certainly, year after year, I expect it will, will be a good event for Cottonwood and probably bring in some good revenue. So I did speak with the city manager about it, and we have some questions that we're waiting back, to get some answers back on. But anyway, just want to let the folks know that it is happening, and we appreciate your support as well.
All right, great. Other council members. Okay, I attended the Bright Bears and Special Needs Preschool Promotions, well, graduations really, as well as the Kindergartner graduation. I was able to attend the Mountain View Preparatory Eighth Grade Graduation and Mingus Union High School graduations. I was unable to attend the Cottonwood Middle School because of the intergovernmental meeting that night. And Mayor, did you have any comments on the IG meeting at all? I forgot to bring, I guess I have it down here, so I'll give you a little while to think it over.
It's pretty lengthy, but you go ahead.
Okay. So let's see, those generally run a long time, don't they? So I missed the Cottonwood Middle School graduation, I'm sorry to say. All the promotions were extremely well planned. It was good to get into the schools and see all the children. And I'd really like to give kudos to Dr. Paul Thai and Principal Jennifer Chilton at Mingus this year because this was their very first graduation, and they did a fantastic job. I mean, it just went without a hitch. It was beautifully done, and I know that all of the council would like to extend our congratulations to the students that have graduated and wish them the best future. So we held the coffee talk at the rec center that evening, or let's see, in the evening. So which evening was that? I didn't write it down, but within the, since I reported last. Citizens who attended spoke about access roads behind businesses. There was one gentleman there who had lots of ideas of how to squeeze through to keep off the highways, you know, through different backs of different buildings. And he's just trying to be very cautious. He had a whole page written about it, and staff met with him, and they discovered that most of it is on private property, so easements would be an issue. So, you know, it was, it's a great idea, and if we can ever do anything in the future to help him and others, we would do that if we could. Citizens discussed the logo. Some liked it, and some spoke in favor of it. One gentleman talked about wastewater rates, and the city manager attended to, and, you know, helped with responses. We did a lot of listening, which is very important, listened to the citizens and how they're feeling about issues. And I'd like to thank Jason Valencia, who volunteered to help with the event. He sent out the press releases, notified staff, and made the arrangements at the rec center. So I just want to say thank you, Jason. And the vice mayor and I attended the Verde Valley Intergovernmental Meeting in Sedona, and city manager Tim Ernstur gave an excellent presentation about their efforts at their wastewater treatment plant. And I was, I asked him for a copy, and I was able to get it, and I sent it to staff, but if the city manager could go ahead and forward that to the council also so that they can view it, that would be great. Okay, anything else that you recall?
The interesting thing Tim was telling us about was that one of the reasons that they want to do what they want, what they're going to do with the ponds is the fact that junipers are dying off because they're desert-free, and they're getting too much water in that area. And they would also like to build on it, that's another reason, but they'd also like to free that up. But I drove by there not too long ago, and there are junipers that are dying in that area where they're being overwatered. So there's a two-fold reason for them to want to stop watering all those big native desert plants.
So they, they did a study, and it was pretty interesting. He gave a good presentation. They, they tried to determine with an injection well the pharmaceuticals, because their statement was that pharmaceuticals, personal care project, products, and all of those things that can be retained in wastewater. And they did the studies, and they, they really were concerned about people down gradient and thought that we would care about that, and so they went ahead and performed all of that also. So that should be available in the presentation, those answers to those questions. I was invited to attend a meeting with Dr. Thai, Superintendent Barbie Rand, and Jennifer Hernandez to talk about Expect More Arizona. And kind of the theme is high expectations begin with us when it comes to education. And their idea is to set the bar at a world-class education for every child. And somewhere, I brought, here it is, this is some information that Jennifer Hernandez sent to me, and I'm going to be placing this on an agenda for council to see this information and to talk about supporting their efforts. And really, you know, a good education isn't just about the Board of Education, as Randy knows from serving on it for so many years. It's really about council members and citizens and families and everybody in the community supporting education. It takes all of us. So we'll be bringing that to you to see if you would like to support them. And Dr. Thai also asked me whether I would be interested in doing an interview about them on Inside Cottonwood. And so on the 11th, I'll be interviewing them, and council will be able to watch that. It'll be on for about a month if you'd like to know more about it. And then we'll bring it to council so you can learn about it then, too. On Friday, Elvakuor, I met with Elvakuor and Peggy Klein, and they're of Speak Out Arizona and the Arizona We Want. Most of you have heard of Latticour, who was once the president of ASU, and he's been working on the Arizona We Want. And Elva would really, she really likes, you know, that we go into neighborhoods and meet, and we have the coffee talks and, and all of the other things that we do to try to take information to the public. And that is what they are trying to do. Many people from their studies are not happy with government. They're happier with local government usually than they are with state or federal government, and the reason for that is because they can come to a meeting and, you know, tell us what they think. They feel more connected locally. But their effort is really trying to, one effort is getting out the vote, so getting people registered to vote, and they'll want some help with that, working with the League of Women Voters. And then the other is just to get into the neighborhoods and create a pathway for citizens to share what they would like to with their elected officials. On Sunday, I attended the annual Verde Valley Medical Center's Cancer Survivors Day honoring survivors throughout the Verde Valley. I'd like to thank the city clerk for preparing a proclamation that I was able to take along. And the proclamation supports the people in the Verde Valley who are cancer survivors, and it begins on the day of diagnosis and goes from there. And one gentleman who attended was a survivor of 40 years. So, and then there was from day of diagnosis to 40 years and everything in between. And this gives hope to all the people and their families who are fighting this disease. And I would like to personally thank the Verde Valley Medical Center for caring about our community and being there for people. They are very much appreciated. And that's my report for this council meeting.
I've got, I've got something I wanted to add. I've been, had the pleasure of serving on the council for a year now, this month, and I am still holding my office hours down here in this room Tuesday and Thursday mornings from 9:00 to 10:00. I'm absolutely amazed I still get people coming in.
Great.
That there's always time. If you show up a little late, we'll make room for you. But please, if you feel you have anything you want to talk about, or you got any questions, please come down and, and visit for a while.
Thank you. And when I was preparing this document, I thought about your meetings and forgot to mention them, so.
I remembered when you were talking about your coffee talks.
Yeah, Speak Out Arizona is definitely a part of, of what Randy's doing also. So the next item is introduction of new employees, and we have a couple of new communication specialists with this, well, a communication supervisor and a communication specialist. And Commander Isinga is here to introduce them.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, happy to introduce two new employees that we have working for us now, Michelle LaSilla and Gretchen Grossette. Michelle started work, actually, they both started on the same day, on May 5th. And Michelle, after her work as a stay-at-home mom, she entered public safety communications workforce and has 30 years of public safety communications experience.
Wow.
I think the plan's kind of lined up when she applied. It worked out really well. She's got the fire experience that we're going to need come July 1st, so we're very excited about that. We stole her from Yavapai County, so it's great to have her aboard. She's a native Arizonan, born and raised in Phoenix. She's a resident of Dewey, married, and has two grown children, three stepchildren, and five grandchildren. Shares her home with an awesome three-year-old Australian shepherd named Barney. Loves hunting, camping, boating, fishing, and waterskiing. And she considers her greatest talent as being able to sit on a quiet beach at Lake Powell. She has family in northern Minnesota, California, Oklahoma, and Nevada, and she finds the pleasant friendly people in our town as the greatest asset that we have here. She's been a great addition to our, our team and picking things up really fast, and we're very pleased to have her. Second, we have Gretchen Grossette, who also started on May 5th. After her work as a stay-at-home mother of four, she entered the public safety communications business with us. So she's from Oklahoma, moved to Arizona to attend U of A, married, and helps with the family cattle ranch, and she participates with her children in showing 4-H animals. Gretchen wasn't readily available to help write her bio, so our, her coworkers helped out. Graveyard shift, always a tough shift to be on. We start out on days, and then we, we put people on different shifts, and Gretchen unfortunately got the graveyard shift. So it's a whole new experience for her. All right, whole new experience for her. So, but her coworkers understand that even on graveyard shift, fashion is very important. And Gretchen has started a new trend by wearing two different shoes to work. So it's very vogue, and everybody else tried it the next day. They thought it was wonderful. So we're very pleased to have Michelle and Gretchen on board. They're, they're doing a great job for them.
I don't think there's anybody that has gotten up and gotten dressed in the morning in kind of a bedroom without a lot of light and ends up with different shoes or different colors. I've done it myself. So would you, would you like to share anything with the public at all? You're certainly welcome to speak.
I'd just like to say I'm excited for the future of the city of Cottonwood's public safety, and I'm thankful to be a part of it.
And I now go to work with the same shoes on. But I'm very proud to be working with the communications department and the police department of Cottonwood. It's a wonderful city and great group of professional people.
Well, I think if you've already been working since the 5th of May, you realize what a great honor it is for all of us to serve the citizens of Cottonwood, and not just the citizens of Cottonwood, because so many folks are in here. We have 40,000 or more people passing certain intersections by Safeway and down by the Giant Station every day. So there's a lot of people in the community, which brings a lot more work for you ladies as you're trying to do your job. So we appreciate you and wish you the best of, of everything.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Just a quick comment that with the two different shoes issue, just a reminder that Gretchen is a U of A graduate.
Well, the really great thing about that is, is that I think that the folks who work there have a great sense of humor, and they need a little bit of, you know, they need to laugh once in a while. So I'm sure she did that on purpose so she could, she could help them have a great day.
I was just testing them.
See what they're wearing, yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is call to the public. This portion of the agenda, what did I do?
Patrick Berry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Patrick Berry. I apologize. I scooped, I went right by that unintentionally.
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, it's my pleasure to introduce Patrick Berry as our new building official. He started two weeks ago.
Three weeks.
Three weeks ago. And he's coming from Washington with 13 years of experience, and I'll turn it to him to get the details.
All right.
I got the same shoes on. Council Mayor, Doug and Steve, nice to meet all you. Like Baron was saying, I just started like three weeks ago, so we see a long road ahead of, in the building department of improvements and, and furthering the city to a better place to stay and live, and I'm looking forward to it. I've got, like she said, I've got 13-plus years' experience in the building department. This is actually my first management type of job, but I'm looking forward to it. I've got a lot of neat people to work with over in planning and zoning and the building department, a lot of new people, so I'm looking forward to it.
All right, well, best wishes in serving the citizens of Cottonwood.
Yes.
And the Verde Valley.
Yes, it's all together. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Great to meet you.
You, too.
Okay, so the next item is call to the public. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action per ARS 3843102H. Comments are limited to a five-minute time period. Are there, is there anyone from the public who would like to address the council about an item that's not on the agenda tonight? If not, we'll close the floor to the public, and we'll go to approval of minutes. And I did see one team correction in those, so let me get there. Hang on just a second. Okay, on page five, the second paragraph, down one, two, three, four, five lines, it says the arsenic treatment uses about 78 gallons per acre of water, and that should be, I think, 78 acre feet instead. And that was just a tiny little typo, I think. And that was all I saw, so I would, if no one else has any corrections that they found, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of May 20th with your correction.
Second.
Okay, the vice mayor made the motion. Councilmember Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, this is the regular meeting of May 20th, 2005, oh, that was the minutes, was, that was the regular meeting of May 20th. Comments regarding items listed on the agenda are limited to a five-minute time period per speaker. First, we have unfinished business, so this is something we have discussed in the past. Item number one is review and direction regarding the city council's 2014 strategic plan. Mr. Bartosz.
Madam Mayor, council members, I won't go through all the history, but we had the strategic planning session in January. I brought what was developed from that meeting to the council in March, who directed staff to go back and add some more detail to it, and also look at the 2013 strategic plan to see if there was something that needed to be added. So what you'll see is a little more detail in this, and there were also some questions that we would have just in reference to trying to get a little more detail of what the council is looking for. For instance, in strategic... For instance, in strategic initiative number one, manage growth. The first one, we've talked about this for some time, a contract for a cost of growth study. And we haven't been able to budget for this. And so I wanted to check and make sure that it's the council's direction to go ahead and leave that in there with the possibility of funding somewhere down the road.
Do you want to leave it in as a placemark?
I think it's important.
Yes.
Otherwise it gets lost in the shuffle.
Yeah, that's something we've had on our list now for seven years, since I became mayor and most of you became council members. So I think it's important to keep the objective, even though we've never been able to fund it.
And then in strategic initiative three, the fourth goal down, it says, "Continue to work with Chamber to promote a bi-local campaign." And again, a very worthy goal. Anything in particular the council wants to see related to that goal?
Well, I know the Chamber has done, through our support with bed taxes, they've done some campaigns. And, you know, often their campaign is, you know, it's more Verde Valley-located, which is fine. But would the council have any ideas on something you might want to do more specifically in Cottonwood? Councilmember Pratt?
Yeah, I don't know if you remember, but it was quite some time ago that I asked to have that be an agenda item. And then the city council, Chamber of Commerce attended as well. And I worked with them, and we did have a committee working on a bi-local campaign and just trying to educate people. And we did work with local first very successfully and still are. So I think we're doing that. And the sense of the importance of buying local is out there, and people are hearing the message. So I think just leaving it in there, but I don't think we need to do more than we're doing right now.
They've got the stickers at the Chamber, and different business people have it for all of them. And that's going slow, but it's still going.
So you're not asking for, to put it on an agenda in the future? You're satisfied with the work that's being accomplished currently?
Yeah, I think the momentum is there.
And everybody else good with that?
This kind of plays back into what I was talking with you about the other day. And you, Mayor, also was, this processed foods district or processed food zoning overlap. That also plays into buying local, locally-produced product that can only be bought here and sourced here. And, you know, it definitely is part of that whole farm-to-table, bi-local campaign. So that plays back into that, and that's why, I guess, I keep bringing that up. And so I'd love to see it stay on there. I'd like to see us have some further talks about doing that.
So are you asking for us to put that on an agenda item?
Well, if I remember right, at the, when we were going through budget, that was actually an item that was brought up that's going to be discussed at some point in the near future.
Right.
Kind of in combination with the entertainment district.
Right.
Those kind of things.
And I also brought it up during the discussions last time of the general plan.
Yeah, I saw the notes. Yes, ma'am.
It was referenced as the enterprise zone, was that it or something?
No, it was, it basically follows suit with what Clarkdale did recently, and they created a processed foods zoning overlap, kind of like our historic district. And the entertainment district would be a, and it, what it does is it really pulls back a lot of the restrictions and approvals that have to be put into place for businesses to come into town that actually produce products that will be consumed and walk out the door, like breads and cheeses and those types of things. Very much craft-oriented products.
Food things. Okay, so that is, leave it on? It sounds like everybody wants it on, and it will be further discussed. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
You can take the question mark off.
And then in the 7th, 8th bullet, it says, "Continue to communicate with the public and region." Again, any particular objectives that the council would like to see related to that particular goal?
Which goal was it?
It's the same.
Sub-8, okay.
It's the same, number, just the 8th one.
Number?
Eighth bullet and number 3.
Eighth bullet and number 3.
Oh, back up to number 3. I was going down to goal 8, okay. 3, got it, I'm getting there. Okay, on 3, I had a couple, I still have, okay, read that spot again.
Continue to communicate with the public and region.
Oh, I have that highlighted. Okay, so, and then I have a comment, let me see what that is. Oh, I just put expound on this. I think we do that, we'll always do it, and we should continue to do it, so. But you wanted more specifics, more than what we're already doing?
Yeah, I mean, we've increased it pretty significantly through the television process, Inside Cottonwood, Just the Facts. You know, we are trying to do more editorials or letters to the editors, which would help. Certainly doing more press releases, trying to communicate as much as possible that way. And I'm just wondering if there was any other idea that the council was thinking of that we may want to try and get into. And obviously, our website, particularly as it gets updated, will be another source of information.
So council, whoever put this on here, by communicate, do you mean collaborating regionally? Or do you mean actually the process of writing and speaking?
I think just getting information out there and saying, "This is what the city's doing." And seeking public input, communication goes both ways.
Right.
And I think we've done a good job with that. We had the public meeting on our general plan and invited the people. That's how we ended up with the design for 12th Street. We had numerous public meetings.
Right, exactly.
So I think we do that well, and I think it's important to continue to do that.
And regionally, I mean, we continue to work with the region on so many issues. I mean, we were able, through our collaborative efforts with Camp Verde, to actually get Highway 260 funded, to the tune of not just 15 million, but 64 million or 66? 66, 66 million, that was through collaboration, communication. I mean, you know, we could write a whole page of ways that we do that with other people in the region. So, but just continue our, because opportunities will arise before we do another strategic plan. So if there are other opportunities, we should jump right in with two feet and collaborate and cooperate. Is that what you're all?
I think we could always improve, so we keep working on it.
Absolutely. Councilmember Hadigee, any additions to that?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so on the one right above that, it doesn't have a question mark, but I do have a comment. The one that says, "Support K-14 education through SciTech, water education, MUHS swim program, bond and override elections, et cetera." I would like to add to that, becoming a Kids at Hope City. And we've already had many council meetings about that. And that's the idea, too, that it takes all of us to promote education and that each child has an opportunity to succeed with no exceptions. And then also add, and working with local schools, and Expect More Arizona. And you can email me, Doug, if you, I have it right here in my little box that I write things on, if you need more, need me to repeat it.
And what was it, Expect More Arizona?
Yes, becoming a Kids at Hope community and working with local schools and Expect More Arizona. All right, thank you. Then on the goals for initiative four, I would like to add somewhere, "Continue with opportunities to recharge water." Is that something that the council would support?
How do you mean that? To recharge?
Yeah, to recharge opportunities.
You mean to, well, injection or?
Yeah, or any other way, I mean, any other way to recharge water. We do it in Del Monte Wash, continue that process. Okay, back to the city manager and your next questions.
I think the next one was strategic initiative five, goal number two, ensure needs are met with input from the youth commission, ensure youth needs are met with input from the youth commission. Any particular thing that the council is looking for?
Well, I had added in the minutes of our joint meeting with the youth commission, we said that we would put their community or their comments and needs in our strategic plan. We actually said that, I read it in the minutes. But I do see that we actually have this down at 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. On item number seven, we actually kind of already did that. So the question is for the question mark, what other, are there any, does council find any other youth needs that we might need to do other than this one, in your opinion?
I think the idea was just that we would receive, you know, we'd have a joint meeting with the youth commission, and we would just listen from them, what they think the needs are. Try to, you know, collaborate with them to make sure their needs were met. So I think maybe, and I don't know, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like the intention there was to get more communication from them to us.
So continue with our joint meetings, is, we usually end up only having one annually. Is that still okay with everyone? Or do you feel we should have two or?
I think open to, if they want to meet with us, make it available.
Okay, so.
If we want to meet with them.
Sure, we don't really have to have that in writing, we can just do it if we need it. Councilmember Garrison?
Couple of things I'd like to add into there is when the State Parks was in here the other night for one of their presentations, they brought up that they'd like to look into doing something to improve the jail trail and make it an all-weather. It'd be nice to see if we could add that in there as part of our recreation goals. Also.
Yes.
Also, I'd like to see us put something in there about working, you know, cooperatively with the Yavapai County to put in whatever they can for, they're putting in the river access at Mingus Avenue, that'd be great if we could put stuff in there that allows us to work a little more cooperatively with them in getting those resources. I think that's going to be great. And if we could do anything to assist the state park in making the jail trail a better facility, that'd be a huge benefit for Old Town as well.
And that reminds me, I wanted to ask the city manager to create a meeting with Max and George and some folks from State Parks to talk about signage to the river, from the gateway sign down to the river, and see if there isn't something we can do. Because Max did bring that up in our last meeting, so I agree. And, you know, we have worked very cooperatively with the county, and the council did approve, I think, of doing that. I guess, were you, you weren't at the meeting?
No, I think I wasn't.
Okay, the council already approved that of working with that project?
No, I know we've been working with them, I just love to see it in the, in our goals.
Okay, and I would too. So anybody object to that? Okay, council says yes. Thank you for bringing that up.
And then the next one is a strategic initiative number six, it would be either one.
Whoa, 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 before we get there. The third, the last item in number five, we could cross out, I think, because we already have that in 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 down. The bicycle-friendly community and Level of Silver, I think we have it twice. So you can just check that out later? And if it's duplicate, then take it out. If not, if it's supposed to say something else, then fix it. Okay, so moving on to number six.
Okay, it is, is 7th one down. Update the building codes to be consistent with conservation. Anything in particular the council's looking for?
I think that was primarily me that was pushing for that. And what I meant by that was, you know, our building codes don't, I think what I meant was, give me a second here to formulate a sentence. With things like purple pipe and everything, getting those into our ordinances, I think we should incorporate that into our, I'm sorry.
Our policy?
Yeah, our policy for new construction and everything, yeah.
Those kind of things.
Yeah, if that's the direction we want to go, you know, to help as much as possible with conservation.
Well, dual plumbing is under number four.
Right.
It is, apparently.
And we do have purple pipe under this one.
And we have the gray water ordinance.
There's a lot of other things that, building code-wise, that we could incorporate, though. I mean, like low-flow toilets, I don't think we have anything specifically that requires new construction to use low-flow. And a lot of, I mean, and I don't have all the ideas, you know, Tom would be one, you know. But I just think that, I'm concerned that there's going to be another wave of new construction. And, you know, I don't think, you know, with everything that's going on conservation-wise across the state, I think we can do better now with new construction. And so we should really look at that and make sure our codes reflect our desire to conserve our resources as much as possible. It's not in code, and then it doesn't really do any good.
It doesn't make it happen.
And as we implement the conservation plan this year, I know there's some recommendations in terms of those very things, so.
Yeah, Tom's been working on that.
And I assume you're looking at more than just water conservation?
Yeah, too, yeah.
Electricity, solar, lead standards, and that sort of thing. Those are all great ideas. I did make one comment under number six, that budget issues for these objectives are pretty, it's just really tight as to whether we're going to be able to do some of these things, even though they are a strategic initiative. There's not a lot of bucks this year to accomplish some of these things. So what say you, city manager? I mean, do you agree, or do you think that we will be able to accomplish most of these in a year?
Well, generally, we don't usually accomplish everything.
Everything, right.
And so we, you know.
They stay on placeholders, as a placeholder for?
You know, try and get done as much as we can and just keep working on it.
Were we going to, actually, I didn't remember hearing this in the budget this year. Are we still planning to, for the restroom facility at the kids park? Or do you think that will be?
It's budgeted.
It is, okay. That's why our budget's tight.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then a little further down, second to last one, develop a truck route ordinance. I just wanted to make sure that the council is still in favor of that, pursuing it. We did have a, I think it was a work session on it, and we did have opposition in the community to it. And, you know, we have tried to work with the opposition, haven't had a lot of success, but we'd be happy to bring that back to the council again if there's still an interest in doing that.
Is the council interested in discussing this?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to discuss, since we have some controversy on that. There are public roads.
Okay, so if we could just leave that in for further discussion and communication and input from the public?
Also, if we could add it, because it does kind of dovetail with that, the, you know, a loading area in Old Town, I know you guys are looking at that, but for, you know, restaurants, when they get in their trucks and stuff to deliver supplies and everything, it's really, I know Jerome struggles with this all the time, too, but it gets tight.
Yeah.
And, you know, and they're using residential streets, too, a lot. And they're not really designed to handle that impact. So if we could try to look at giving commercial truck traffic a place to stage in Old Town to make their deliveries, or something along those lines, would be helpful.
And then the last one, develop an ordinance that requires trash containers on one side of the street. Again, I just wanted to make sure the council was interested. And again, I just wanted to make sure the council was interested in pursuing this. Some of the feedback I've gotten from cities is that it doesn't really save the pavement all that much. And for the aggravation it may create, it may not be worth it.
Because it gets doubly worn down on this one side of the street.
Right.
And they still have to go up the other side to get to the end of the street to go down? Yeah, so.
I'd rather see that. I don't believe that was my item that was put on there, but I would rather see us modify that to, we were, we were, after the last public forum we had on trash collection, we had stated that we were going to be working on bringing that back and setting up a committee to look at trash collection in the city, period. And part of that being, you know, the possibility of the city providing and contracting out trash services, part of the water bill, and then coming up with different rules for those other entities that continue to want to operate within the city limits. So I'd rather see it changed to that and not be so specific as talking about what side of the street the trash container is on, but to develop a policy on trash collection within the city limits is the way I'd see it. Prefer to see it.
I would agree. I think it's something we sort of let fall.
So this is, just to give you guys, you know that basically the same council members except for Randy have had this discussion and we don't get very far. And so I do agree with Randy. I'm always ready to discuss that. I think we should have a policy. This one just came from a discussion with Chris Taylor and it seemed like something that the waste haulers would agree to that could save gas and maybe that gas money could be put into more conservation and recycling. But this was his suggestion of some little thing we could do to put trash containers on one side of the street. So that's how that got there. But since then, the city manager's done some sleuthing and trying to find out how it works in other communities. And his report back is that it's not perfect. So, but that if the council, if it's the council's pleasure to discuss a policy, then we'll put that in there and pray for our staff because they can't win when we discuss this because we don't all agree. So, Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I think we do need to discuss it. It's an important issue, but I think we really need to listen to the public too. The last survey, people said, no, we do not want to be dictated to. We want to still be free to choose our own companies. And we have to remember that. That's what the people in Concordwood want.
I think there's an education process too though because they may say they want their freedom to choose a trash service, but they don't understand the impact that that may have to their streets. And so if you were to ask that same question in a different way, you know, do you want your streets to, you know, fall apart and not be maintained? You know, I mean, you know what I'm trying to say? It's an education process. So I think if they understood the issue more clearly, they might be willing to sacrifice choosing a trash, choosing a trash hauler in order to save their streets.
Yeah.
So it is, it's a difficult discussion because we have the private businesses and we want to support them. Yet, you know, leadership should provide the educational process and looking at, you know, what the future holds for people with trash issues. And so finding that balance, I mean, you know, there are, I've been met in Walmart with people who were very disappointed that we didn't do anything about it when we discussed it before. So not everybody agrees. But we did the survey several, that was what, four or five years ago? And so, you know, councilmember Pratt has stuck to that. That's the people have spoken and I understand his point of view on that. And so it's, it is difficult. But, you know, it doesn't hurt to continue the conversation and it's just one of those things that the city manager is, it's not easy, is it? Look at him smiling. So council, you have vice mayor?
By continuing the conversation, something might come up that makes a good compromise too. So get all the trash haulers in here and the people that are interested in all the players. There may be some kind of a compromise to where we're not putting four businesses out of business to hire one.
There are some creative ways, I think. We discussed them, I don't know, at the council meeting, but I certainly discussed them with Randy and I think with city attorney too. Or you mentioned there's different ways the city can do franchise agreements. So people are still free to choose, but if you want to combine billing, then we probably did discuss this in public. I think there are options where people still have the freedom, but more than likely, they're going to choose a single-source provider from the city for the ease of billing and everything else.
And I'm not sure, are we getting a little bit, is it okay to discuss that now? Or are we getting a little bit?
I think it's related to the initiative that's part of the agenda.
Okay, so we're okay?
Yeah.
All right, so go ahead.
No, I'm done. I don't want to belabor because we've discussed, but I think it is still important and we should still talk about it.
And that's what part of it is. I mean, anybody can opt out of the city contracts.
When we had the public meeting, every trash provider that was here was willing to participate on a panel discussion to see what compromises or suggestions could be made. One of the things is they all seem to think they could do all-in-one collection versus having a recycle container versus a non-recycle. And I haven't seen much of that getting anywhere in the last six months. Another thing is, is during those discussions, we had talked about our ability with our new billing software to actually be able to bill for waste collection as part of the water sewer billing system, allowing us to go out and contract and basically dip our toes in the water, see if we got any interest in providing that service and be able to run it through our billing without too much extra work being put on the staff to do that. So I think there's ways to get around it. I just wanted to see the conversation move forward. It just hasn't gone anywhere for the last six months or so.
And what I'm thinking is that maybe we could create that committee and, you know, maybe council could appoint you to be on it and some of the haul, all the haulers and some citizens and make a recommendation to council through, you know, I mean, if we put it on an agenda, the trash haulers are going to email every person they know and we're going to have people outside to the other side of the street. So that doesn't work.
No, the trash haulers have taken the position where they don't want a single contract. They all see it as potentially losing their business.
And I don't blame them.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, I mean, we could certainly try it. I'm not sure that they're going to come up with an idea.
Well, maybe it's the district thing or, you know, maybe something that we've discussed a long time. But I mean, they should be getting the idea that this keeps coming up. And, you know, another new council just might force the issue. But we're still trying to work with everyone and we'll continue to do that because that's who we are on this council. But, you know, it's not going away, so.
Why don't we just put in there that let's create an ad hoc committee? That is their one task is to work on some kind of waste management plan for the city.
I like that.
And just have a public discussion, invite the haulers, have somebody from city council and have the public. And that way, we don't have the meeting where people show up with signs and scream and yell and everybody's involved in the conversation who is interested.
I like that.
We should also be prepared as council members to have the public show up and scream and yell at us. We still have to make our decisions.
Right.
And that's the bottom line. That's what we're here for.
Exactly.
But this way you have all the entities.
Right. Everybody got to have a say and then the council decides from the recommendation what is the best for the entire community and all the citizens of the city.
Including the businesses.
Right. So would, is it possible with this agenda item, if we could ask council if they wanted two people on a committee? Is that, is that okay? Because I would think that councilmember Garrison and anybody, one more person who might want to, councilmember Pratt?
Yeah, I would.
So councilmember Garrison and Pratt will be on the ad hoc committee. Is that okay with you all? Okay. So how can you write that in this? We'll leave it to the city manager to write.
I think I can go back to our original strategic plan seven years ago. Take it out of that and.
Right. And then we'll have the minutes, but it'll also help you transcribe it if you need to.
Okay.
Okay.
I lost my list here. Okay, here we go. Okay. And then the last one, strategic initiative eight. Ensure we are a veteran-friendly city. Again, just anything in particular that the council was looking for related to that issue?
Well, I think this, every year we have tried to do things, one thing for veterans. And we used to support their van. And now we have an opportunity to support them getting a bus that they need. And so I think I would like, you know, that has been expressed to council as a need for veterans. And so I would like to put that item on our strategic plan is finding a way to help them with a bus. The issue is, is that there's some 90-year-olds, I think, that are still, they're doing things for the city. They come to the Fourth of July event, they do other city events. They go to every funeral of veterans in the Verde Valley, all over the Verde Valley, and present flags to the survivors. And they are not able to climb into the van anymore. They're all pretty elderly and they cannot get in it and it isn't working anymore and they don't want to put a lot of money in it. So council has discussed this the past year or two and we keep finding roadblocks. But I'd like to put in, maintain social services, find a mechanism to get a bus for our veterans' color guard against group. So that could be our task this year that we chose to work together on.
And we'll be coming to the council soon with that idea.
Okay, and then somewhere, as I was reading, and I didn't highlight it, so I can't find it, but somewhere it talked about the teen center in here, didn't it?
I believe it is in there, just a general comment about supporting the teen.
Where is that?
I think that it would be in Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec? Yep, it is. Third item down. Support creation of the teen center. And I just wanted to give the city clerk, who is the president of the teen center, an opportunity to share anything with us about the teen center and do we need to, to create anything specific besides support?
Well, Madam Mayor, we're now getting ready to make our final list so we can complete the center to open it up. Right now, we need painting done and flooring and so forth. And hopefully, with the proceeds that are gained from the Tilted Earth Wine Festival, that they're supporting the teen center, raising funds for that. Hopefully, we can complete the center and get it open. It was a huge help with the council supporting leasing the building to the teen center commission. That's really great. And actually, we already need to expand out into more of the building. We have three pool tables, a ping-pong table donated. We've got some office furniture waiting. We have the computers. Kids want to have teen dances, but in order for us to hold the dances there at the center, we do need to expand into the second bay area. So the maintenance crew will have to move out of there. So it would just be, you know, supporting the expansion of the building, the use of the building.
The use of the building, okay. And what about supporting any of the programs? Like, is there anything that the council can do to support that?
The, I, I have the webinar today about the AmeriCorps Vista workers. And in order to get a full-time Vista worker, you need 13, a minimum of $13,000 to fund them, fund a person for one year plus supply, a travel stipend and actually health benefits. So if that's something that we were able to acquire, the grant application or the application for a Vista worker goes in this fall and then you would acquire it for the year 2015. So that would, may require funding or I don't know if we would be able to add that Vista worker under the city's health insurance. That would be part of the requirements for the Vista AmeriCorps person.
So how does council feel about that? Having just been through the budget sessions and is that something that we can at least say that we want to explore?
Yeah. Again, we don't have to commit to doing it, but certainly look at different options and see if we can do it. It's an important thing to do if we can.
And council usually is allowed some contingency, you know, so that might be a mechanism that we could. But if we just put explore supporting programs of the teen center?
Yes, and this, the AmeriCorps project to the state, they really focus on youth programs and helping economically disadvantaged kids succeed, which is one of the main components that we're looking at to complete with that teen center. So they, you get high points for addressing youth needs in the community, helping them succeed.
And the youth commission has done a lot of fundraising and you have about what, $3,000 in your?
I think we have $3,200 right now.
$3,200?
Yes, and we continue with our fundraising. We have several events, fundraising events scheduled through the fall. So yes, we continue to do our own little bake sale fundraising.
I know, I said $3,000, $3,200 is a lot of cupcakes. And they're planning on, well, besides the Tilted Earth Festival, which is supporting the teen center and that is so exciting, thanks to Eric Glomsky. We really appreciate him supporting this. And you're also talking about another Halloween, what did you call that, Fall Festival?
Yes, our Fall Festival, which was very successful and it was, it was really neat to see the families with the little kids that came to the festival and were having a good time. And everybody really enjoyed it. So yes, we're going to hold that, I believe it's October 4th this year and we'll hold it at the Moose Lodge again with, you know, the events for the kids. And it was a true family event. It was, it was very well attended.
Okay, so just speaking to members of the public that are here in our audience and members of the public that are watching us on TV, we have opportunities for you. We are so excited that our teen center is going to be opening anytime. We're working toward that goal and we need volunteers. If you care about the youth in your community, please call Mary Ann. She, her office is right next door. 820, what's your address? 824 North Main Street. Or you can call her at 340-2725. That's 340-2725. We're looking for enthusiastic volunteers to help the youth and we're not just looking for adults. We're looking for teens and youth to help also. This is all about the youth and they have to be part of this to make it work the way it should work. So if you have the ability to volunteer to help out in any way, we need you. And we're real excited about this and we think it can be quite successful in the community.
And Madam Mayor, on that note, also about the city's assistance, I did speak with the city manager today about whether our, the city's HR department would be able to complete the, not complete, but go, work the.
Background checks.
Background check that we need done for each of our volunteers that are going to be working in the center. That would be a really great help if the city HR staff would be willing to take care of that process for us. We would cover the expenses. It's about $65 for the check, a background check, $5 for the fingerprint card. We will cover all the expenses for that. But if they would take care of the process for us, that would be great. Confidentiality of the records and so forth.
Right. And the, from attending the meeting yesterday, one of the big issues is the confidentiality of all this information. And where are you going to keep it locked up? And who's going to be responsible for it? So is that, with the city manager's acknowledgement as to whether his staff can do this or not? And if they can, that could be something the council could list here as a subitem. Is that something that you think that they will be able to do?
I need to check with HR, Iris and probably check with Steve too. I'm sure they will not.
Okay, so after doing the appropriate checks, if it works, and it may not, we understand that, but if it will work out, then the council, does the council want to support that backup for the teen center, keeping the records of the people that have the background checks? Is that, so that's contingent upon you finding out whether that's possible? Anything else? So looking at, looking at expanding the use of the building, is that something council would like to explore? would like to explore if there's a need?
Sure.
And that also goes with the city manager being able to find someplace for the stuff that's there, because that's a big, kind of a big deal, too. So that's kind of contingent upon that. And then the other, there were three things, what was the other one?
The Vista Worker.
Oh, the Vista Worker. So explore the possibility of hiring a Vista Worker. Okay. Anything else? Anything else for the strategic items? Okay.
Mayor, that if the council would like, I could bring these back with revisions, or go ahead and approve them tonight with the revisions. It's the council's pleasure.
We have, we have a record of the minutes, so I, I think that, I would say just go ahead.
That'd be fine, if you could, when you make the changes, just get them back to all of us, so we have a copy.
Yeah, so we have a copy of the updated version. And then, did anybody want to go over the purpose statement, mission statement, or vision statement tonight? Did everybody read it, and is that, Mr. Pratt?
I just wanted to talk about one bullet point that I would really like to emphasize somehow.
Okay.
Maybe move up. It's under Initiative Three. You know, we're doing well with the tourism and all that, and, you know, the wine industries are doing well. But I really think we still need to concentrate on what I call real economic development, and that's recruiting new businesses and high-paying jobs.
You know, I have that highlighted, and I totally agree with you.
I think that is so important. It's, if we spend all our time with the wine industries, we're, we're ignoring
Diverse, we have to be diverse.
Yeah.
I like that.
We can't depend just on that. We want to be able to provide jobs for our young people so they don't leave Cottonwood.
Right. So anybody, so, I mean, leave it where it is.
Yeah, I guess, I was thinking maybe move it to the top, or the second one.
Oh, to the top of the goals, under number three?
Yeah, just so it's more noticeable.
I like, move it to the top, I like that idea. That's easy, right? And that is something I think that Casey works on consistently and constantly, and the chamber does, too. And we definitely want those high-paying jobs, you know, to come to our community.
If you're going to bring that one up again, I, I did have a, I think we need to con, I think we need to also establish some maybe better supports for the existing businesses that are already in our community as well as chasing new businesses to bring in. So I know we, we work with, and we're very business-friendly, but it would be nice to see maybe some, some further supports put in for the businesses that are here, and working with them to improve their business.
And that's been our focus for the past seven years. I mean, we have focused highly on that. That's been one of Casey's main duties that he's done. I mean, almost to the exclusion that I would like to see Terrence's point of increasing, recruiting new businesses, because through this downtime, that's what we've been doing, exactly what you, what you've talked about, where we have really concentrated, supported, and we'll continue to do that, current businesses, because that is important.
Retention is very important. Expansion and retention of the current businesses is real important.
Mm-hmm. I'd like to offer opportunities for members of the public to speak if they like. We've got some really, some, Phil Tribella's here tonight, and he's so involved in the business community, he's a leader in business. And so if there's anything that anybody here would like to comment on, or add, or subtract, or make a recommendation to council, you're certainly welcome at this point to do that if you like. Anything else from the council, anything from the public? And the vision and mission are okay with everyone? Okay, so we'll move on.
So the council?
We need a motion on this.
I'll move to approve the strategic initiatives as corrected.
Second.
Okay, so Mr. Ilinski made the motion, Mr. Pratt seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'd like to thank you for your work on that item, Mr. City Manager, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item number one is approval of an easement with APS to provide electrical service for the city's new emergency communications center. Item number two is emergency dispatching services agreements with the Clarkdale Fire District, Town of Jerome, and the Verde Valley Ambulance Company. And number three is liquor license sampling application for Lori Mayberry applicant for the Blazin' M Ranch. Are there any items that council members would like to pull for discussion? Are there any items that a member of the public would like to pull for discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion, Mr. Pratt.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Pratt made the motion, Mr. Garrison seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Down to new business, the following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item number one is acceptance of a library services and technology grant for the purchase of an interactive smart table and four early literacy tables. And we have Vanessa here with us tonight, Vanessa Ward, who is the manager of the library.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I want to introduce you to Anne Roberts, who is a part-time employee, and through the Business Assistance Center took the grant writing class, did a lot of work on her own time also, and applied for this grant that we are asking you to accept.
Wow, congratulations.
Part of it was from last year's grant that the, the group did not approve and wanted us to pursue this year. So, Anne Roberts.
Okay.
We're very excited to be receiving this grant. We were very fortunate that the Arizona State Library wanted to fund our grant in its entirety. They liked what the library's been doing to provide technology for the youth of our area, and wanted to continue their support. So with this grant, they actually gave us partially a new grant and partially monies from last year, so they could fund it in its entirety for a total of $23,480.
Wow.
We're very excited to get this new technology into the library and into the hands of our young patrons. The early literacy tablets in particular are very popular with the children. We've got two of the learning centers already, and they are used all the time, day in and day out, the children just love using them. We've partnered with local, with the local school district. We've also partnered with the special education over at Dr. Daniel Bright to help bring in some of their kids to come and use the technology, because a lot of it is specifically able to be used for children with autism and handicaps to help them communicate. So it's very exciting to have this available for the children of our community. Thank you.
I must say, you guys just do such a great job.
Thank you.
We're very proud of the work that you do for the citizens of our whole area. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah, I tend to be biased when it comes to issues of education. As an educator, I don't see why we would not support something that would just enhance educational opportunities for our young people. I don't think, see why we wouldn't support something that wouldn't feed right into our efforts with the STEM program.
Absolutely.
And I don't think why we wouldn't agree to something that really will enhance our youth and will cost the city nothing. This one is a no-brainer. You got it, Vanessa.
I totally agree. Any other comments from council members?
It's excellent.
Yeah, it's very exciting, very exciting. Any comments from members of the public? Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve and authorize library staff to accept the LSTA grant to fund an interactive smart table and four early literacy tablets for the Cottonwood Library.
Second.
We have twins. Okay, Mr. Pratt made the motion, and the Vice Mayor says council member Dowling seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, great work, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is removal of the fence around the Old Town Activity Field behind City Hall. And we have Mr. Scott with us this evening to present this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This idea came up a while ago, I believe, at a department head meeting, the idea of removing that fence for a multitude of reasons, mostly, and we have Hezekiah here today to answer any questions also. At the events, they, they thought it'd be great, people can come and go as they please, it's much more of a, Hezekiah's better describing this than I am, but, but a much better atmosphere, they felt. So most of the departments agreed on it, Public Works had no concern with it, Parks and Rec thought it was a great idea, PD had one concern, and that was, they were concerned with people being able to get in and drive on the grass. What we're thinking about is if, if council would like us to remove the fence, we'll probably come back with boulders, very similar to something that was done at Riverfront Park, to prevent vehicular access, but very easy pedestrian access, come and go. But we did want to bring this to council, because it is, it is a popular park, and we don't want to do something that
Okay.
Drastic.
Council members, Mr. Howrigie?
Yeah, I have a question. And I'm not sure how it's going to play out, because we haven't heard from Boys and Girls Club for a little while yet. But considering the fact, if they decide to come back to that location, I do feel that that fenced-in area was very helpful to the Boys and Girls Club, keep track of the kids out there. I really feel that before moving on this, we should get confirmation from the Boys and Girls Club, if they intend to come back or not. I believe they still have a number of years left on their lease. And I'm not, I'm not feeling that there's any real urgency in doing this right now, at least immediately. But I think that is a concern of mine, and since we don't have the answer from the Boys and Girls Club, maybe we can do a little fieldwork and try to get a hold of a
And I've already asked the city manager to do that, and he has contacted her.
Okay.
And so he has not heard back, as the last I heard.
No, Madam Mayor, I haven't, and council member Howrigie, I, we had conversations with them before about this, and they were supportive from the standpoint that it would discourage from people, discourage people from walking their dogs in that area. They've had a lot of problems with the kids falling into dog feces and all kinds of things. But again, it would probably be worthwhile to check with them again, and I'm waiting for a call back from them now to find out what their status is.
Well, the issue about the dogs, the dog feces, we do have a dog park, and we can put signage that restricts the dogs on that, on that facility, so it becomes less of an issue.
Yeah.
Now, did we, we passed something where we asked them not to bring them into the farmer's market, right? Did we, we did that? So we, we don't, we don't allow them in for the farmer's market?
No.
Like a park your pooch, I think is what it was.
Park your pooch, yeah.
Madam Mayor and council, if you remember, we had looked at doing that, city manager as well as staff, and we brought that to council, and we decided at that time not to follow through.
Okay, because, you know, I mean, there were a lot of negative comments from citizens that weren't happy with that.
Right.
But then there's other citizens who would prefer not to have pets there, so it's hard to please everyone. Mr. Garrison?
If this fence was removed, is, would it be, would it be advantageous to keep that section that fronts the Boys and Girls Club currently in place, just as a, as kind of a barrier, because they do use that area as parking and whatnot? I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be advantageous to keep, you know, that 100 feet or so of fence in place, at least as it fronts the building? But I'm, you know, this hasn't been a ballfield forever. It makes a great park, the facilities or the, the events that we use it for would be, I think, more user-friendly if that fence wasn't in place, and I really don't see any need to continue to have the fence there. I think it, I don't think it's going to be disinvade, disadvantageous to the Boys and Girls Club to remove it. It just creates a more open, inviting area, and if anything, it, it creates better access and
That's where you and I differ, because there's a lot of younger kids in that area that, without the fencing, who knows where they're going to end up? To me, it's a safety issue.
Well, safety in, safety out, as well. You know, if, if you have an intruder in there, it definitely creates a more open atmosphere to get out, so. I, I see your point, I just, I think it hasn't been used for that purpose for a long time. I think it'd create a more open and inviting atmosphere to have that park in place without the fencing. So I'm in, in favor of removing the fencing, but I do have some concerns about, you know, at least keeping the area there next to the current Boys and Girls Club, you know, separated to some point, and, you know, it's not sounding really positive that they're, that we're going to see them back.
Well, maybe not, but let's make sure, and let's remember that the, the Boys and Girls Club, although it's not part of their lease, I grant you that, I'm sure, but it still is a, a field that they used extensively. So it does get used for other purposes than the farmer's market.
Right, lots of, so Mr. Pratt and then Mr. Ilinski?
Yeah, I, I agree with Mr. Howrigie, but that is a concern, but the Boys and Girls Club did, as the city manager said, expressed to me on a couple of occasions, they almost wished the fence wasn't there, so people wouldn't use it as a dog park, that that was a safety issue. And the other safety issue is, I've been down there, that fence is in really disrepair, it's in a bad shape, it's, it's probably a hazard itself as it exists. I'm not sure I'd want kids running in and around there. So I agree with you that, yeah, it, you need a barrier, but still, I would probably go with taking it away.
I think we better find out if they're coming there first, I think that was the question.
Okay, so Mr. Ilinski and then Vice Mayor.
I agree, I think we should get an answer from Boys and Girls, how they feel about the removal of the fence, and if we do decide to remove it, I hope that we'd put some signage out there for, you know, weeks in advance, letting folks know, because I do know folks walk their dogs there, and we don't want to surprise them.
And Vice Mayor?
And I would like to see it not made a target, and have a bullseye on it, pave it and make a parking lot out of it. Keep it as a park.
Agreed.
Isn't there already some signage on there that refers to it not being a dog park? If I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, Councilman Dowling, there is signage that states it's not a dog park, that we do have a dog park facility down at the Riverfront Park complex.
And they have to be on a leash in there?
In the current facility?
In this facility.
Yes.
But they still let them go when no one's looking, and they go to the bathroom a lot, or they go to the bathroom even if they're on a leash?
Yes. They do what they do.
They do what they do, because, yeah, but they're precious babies, you know, so pick it up and, so
Could we just table this until we get an answer back from Boys and Girls Club on their, their
So let's table this, that's a good idea. We kind of have mixed thoughts from council on it, and let the city manager continue to try to contact them. And my opinion is it should be taken down. I agree with council member Garrison, it would be okay to leave the back fence up if, you know, but I, I think it's time. And the safety that council member Pratt mentioned is of utmost importance. So council's kind of on different pages on this, so would you please continue your checking and
I think it's important to say that I like your suggestion about making sure it doesn't become a parking lot and it remains a park.
I like that, too.
I think that's very important.
However it ends up, if it does come down, I think there still needs to be some way to demarcate the difference between the two, and control some of the flow of traffic in and around that, for sure, because, you know, you don't want just a free-for-all over there with people driving in and out.
So when we redo the parking lot, we could put a hard curb there, right? Around the whole thing?
That's, yeah, that is the plan.
And so that would be somewhat protection also.
So we have this back on the, what meeting, would that be the third Tuesday this month?
We can table it indefinitely, and once the city manager gets the information, they can bring it back on the nearest agenda.
Two weeks, two weeks more than enough.
I mean, indefinitely, if they never call back, I don't like indefinitely. They need to keep up their, their
Well, at that, at that point, we've got our answer, but them not responding.
Yeah, so
I mean, give them an adequate chance to respond, I mean, that's
Give them a month, there's 30 days, so after 30 days, and we don't hear a response, then put it back on the agenda, whenever that is.
We can do that.
Okay.
First or third Tuesday in July, then.
Yeah. And sooner if you hear back. What's the, because, but this is, yeah, it'd be the 17th of June, then, if you hear back by Because, but this is, yeah, it'd be the 17th of June, then, if you hear back by then. Okay, so...
Do we need to vote on whether to table that?
I think staff has its direction. I think it's the council's pleasure if you want to make a formal motion to do it. No legal action's being taken.
Do you want to make a formal motion, or just leave it with direction?
Just leave it with direction.
Okay, we'll leave it with direction. Okay, so, the next item is Resolution Number 2746, adopting the General Plan 2025 as the general plan for the City of Cottonwood. Mr. Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. This is an important step in the process to get a new general plan update for the City of Cottonwood. What this will do, this resolution allows the process to move forward to putting the item on the ballot so that the voters of Cottonwood can choose to approve this in November, which is really the start of the general plan, is really when it gets implemented. So, what you're being asked to do tonight would be make the decision to move forward with the plan that we've developed. And so, just to acknowledge all the people that have worked on this, there's been many people who've worked on putting together this plan over the last couple of years, of course, the City Council, Planning and Zoning Commission, in fact, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the Parks and Recreation Commission, as well as the General Plan Advisory Committee, which spent a lot of hours, a lot of time reviewing the plan last year.
That was made up of a variety of citizens from inside and outside of the city?
Representing a diverse range of backgrounds, and we noticed every one of the times we've brought this back to council, we've had representatives from the committee have come to attend. We've got Phil Turbell here tonight, who was an active member on the advisory committee. In addition, we had the workshops and the open house events in the public, and we had many people from citizens, other people representing different civic organizations that were active participants, and many different staff members from the city, put in a lot of time from all the departments, from the city manager on down, to the people out counting the traffic. So, really, a wide range of people helped put ideas, formally shaped the plan, and I think it's ended up being a very balanced plan that, as I said, respects the diversity of opinions of people, provides an open door for people to continue being involved with input in the future. And I think it's a forward-thinking plan that supports innovation and state-of-the-art thinking on so many different issues, and is open to that as well. So, it is a requirement to have a council adopt the plan by resolution. It needs to be done in at least four months before the election, so there's, really, time is getting shorter and shorter. So, I think there's a tendency to want to keep working on the plan, keep fixing things and revising things, because new ideas keep coming up, but there has to be a point at some time where we...
Right, and we've gotten lots of great comments from the public, and, you know, some of them we were able to do and some we weren't, and tried to keep a balanced perspective on everything, as I understand it, while staff worked through all of that. So, okay, so, any comments or suggestions from the council? We have some members of the public that would like to speak, if you're ready for that. Okay, we have Andy Rosetta with us tonight, who would like to speak about the general plan.
Good evening. Andy Rosetta, 625 South Mountain Mingus Road here in Cottonwood. I'm here to speak in favor of the general plan that's been presented to you, and I just want to especially thank the city for recognizing the need to add an economic development section to the general plan.
We appreciate your suggestion.
To me, that's most important. Economic development and jobs, that's really the heart line and the pulse of the city. We've got to have revenue and growth to provide the services that you provide to all the citizens, both in the city limits and outside the city. So, I want, I'm here to thank you, Mayor, also Doug Bartosz, Charlie, Casey Rooney. Charlie and Casey and I worked on this, putting that together. So, I just want to thank all of the leaders of the city, all of you, for including that in the plan, because it's so important. I think it's a good plan and provides a good roadmap for this town and for anybody that's thinking about coming here to either move here to retire or to do business here, if they go online and pull that up. I think it really describes what this town's all about and where we want to go. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, and also your work and Filter Bell's work, serving on the different committees and all of the input, and, you know, gosh, your time. That was a lot of hours of time. Did you have anything you wanted to share, Phil?
If you can come back to that question you asked me earlier, I was prepared for that.
Okay.
There's a minute, sometimes I get really pissed off.
Does it fall within the ideas of a general plan? What was it? I don't even remember, recall.
Terrence is high-paying jobs attract...
Oh, the high-paying jobs? Well, that's part of an economic development plan. Is that okay for him to comment? Economic development is part of the general plan, so please?
Thanks. I apologize to the council and the mayor. I wasn't prepared to have that discussion.
Sorry, I just sort of like...
I had a really blank look on my face, I'm sure, and I apologize.
You did.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
But I was thinking, I was thinking about what Terrence had said about, you know, higher-paying jobs attracting higher-paying jobs, and I had to kind of sit there and roll some things through my mind. And if we go back, looking at the higher-paying jobs that have come to the Verde Valley, I think it's in an industry right now that is looked upon as the enemy, construction and development. Cottonwood has taken a position to say that they are business-friendly, and they want to do a lot of things to do business, but it's become more and more difficult to do business in Cottonwood. And I'm bumping into more and more people that are in the construction or development area that said, "I need to locate outside the town of Cottonwood. I need to locate outside the town of Clarkdale." Used to be it was Sedona that people said, "I don't want to do business in Sedona. It's difficult to do business in Sedona." And now, it's becoming more and more difficult in the incorporated towns to do business. It's becoming cost ineffective to do business in the town of Cottonwood and the town of Clarkdale. Therefore, some of these higher-paying jobs are nonexistent. The construction industry, both you guys, I was sitting there thinking, are in that construction industry, and that's been the backbone of the Verde Valley for the past 40 years, since Ned Warren came to town. Ned Warren came about 40 years ago and did a little project called Verde Village. He just didn't put it in Cottonwood. And now, Verde Village, of course, has surpassed Cottonwood, and now the builders are saying, "Find me a Verde Village lot that I can build a house on." In the real estate industry, I try and keep a light attitude about it, but the real estate industry is starting to bounce back a little bit. We are almost back to the cost of production. It's like farming, when you're growing crops and you're selling them for less than the cost of production. That's where the builders are right now, is they're barely meeting cost of production. Cottonwood has initiated lots of general plans and planning and zoning ordinances, and lots of rules and regulations that make it a great environment to live, and I agree that it's great, but it has stopped the independent businessman from doing business in Cottonwood. I would just make a short list of the 1% construction sales tax, impact fees, utility hookup fees, permitting fees increases, fire sprinklers on all constructions, gray water dual systems, dark sky ordinance compliance, a myriad of issues that have made it difficult to be competitive in the Cottonwood environment. Some communities that I'm aware of in Arizona have done a tax abatement. They've done fee moratoriums. They've done express approval processes to try and induce builders to build, and that's when you really put the skin in the game and said, "We are really interested in making this happen in our community, therefore, we're willing to step out." It's a little easier to say, "Oh, we're business-friendly, and we'd like to be business-friendly, and we'd like to make that happen." It's not going to happen right now, I don't think. And I think that there should be some real consideration. As Andy was saying, an economic development plan is, is we may have to mitigate some of our plans that we've got for all of these safety and all of these consumer. I went to a great presentation on the Dodd-Frank Banking Bill, and it's to protect the consumer and the children. It's not to induce any type of business. It's to protect everybody, and we are doing a great job of protecting everybody, and we've slammed the small independent businessman at that cost. And I don't think we're going to be able to attract that wage that's paid a going families' overhead for the past 40 years without construction in the Verde Valley, without construction in Cottonwood. And I really think that we're going to have to look at that and say, "Can we agree to some concessions?" I talked to the fire chief before he retired about this, and I said, "Would there be any way that we could talk about making some concessions? The fire sprinkler program adds $5,000 to the average construction of a new home. The 1% sales tax adds $1,500. You start adding the impact fees and the utility hookup fees and all of those fees, and you've got $10,000 before you've touched anything." I really think the city, if we really are serious about attracting a higher-paid job... I was asking Charlie, is $7.65 what we're talking about, or $10.10 an hour? The construction industry is what, $15 to $25 an hour? Would be my opinion.
As long as you have it.
Pardon?
As long as you have the demand.
Yeah, and we are starting to see some demand come back. We're back almost to the cost of production, and I think we're going to have to take a look at that and say, "What can we balance? Are we willing to make some concessions? Are we willing to give a little bit? Are we willing to say, 'Growth is not the enemy. Construction is not the enemy. Development is not the enemy.'" That's what's provided the standard of living that Cottonwood's become accustomed to. We don't have a lot of other diversified manufacturing. We don't have a lot of the diversification that the Prescott markets got, the Flagstaff markets got, or anything else. You've got to play what you brung, and what we brought was, for the past 40 years, is growth. And I guess that was some of the notes that I sat there after you put me on the spot and said, "Hey, how do you feel, Turbell? Maybe you better stand up and say it."
All right.
So, in the general plan, the general plan, Charlie and I negotiated, I guess is the word, hopefully, because I was pushing buttons, because I said, "We've got to, we've got to, we've got to allow this to happen." But I see a lot of other buttons being punched back. It said, "No, no, no, no. We must protect the consumer and the children." I'm sorry. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you. That's a discussion that we can continue. You know, there's a lot of issues whereby the public has to pay for those, and so, they would be needed, they would need to be in on that conversation, I think, is, are you willing to pay for the sewer and the water hookups for new development? You know, because they're the ones that pay. It has to come from somewhere, the payments for that. But, on the other hand, you're getting the new business, you're getting sales tax dollars in some cases to support services like fire and police and rec centers and parks and things that people want and ask for. So, considering the general plan, thank you for your comments. Okay?
I have one other...
Yes, Tim?
Just one of my pet items that we talked about last time was reducing our gallons for capita per Day consumption by 5%.
Mm-hmm.
And I was just looking through here, and I don't actually see it made it in here unless I'm overlooking it.
Well, I read it in the minutes of the meeting, so that's...
I'm just saying, I'm looking at it in the general plan, and I don't see that.
It may not have gotten in there.
Did that get in there? Maybe, he wasn't at the meeting, so maybe he didn't know.
I think that, the way I understood that, you were going to be working with Tom Whitner to work through the more detailed planning that's going to be...
So, that's more of a detailed thing, and this is more of a generality? And so, that might be more detailed, but we acknowledged through minutes that we want to do that? Is that... And so, did Tom, and did you guys talk about that in the water piece?
I think there's going to be an effort in the coming year to work on a water conservation plan and more of a detailed water, that type of water management planning. It's not in this, it didn't get updated into here because it wasn't...
I was just under the impression that we were going to slip that into the general plan in goals and objectives, and it seemed like, that was my understanding. I don't know if anybody else...
From reading the minutes, I was absent at that meeting, but the minutes made it sound like everyone said yes. Let's put that in.
Yeah, with the goal being, you know, I mean, if it's in writing in the general plan, then it's a stated goal, and that's something we just discussed, and it gets lost in the minutes, and we don't ever take action on it. So, I thought that's, that was my understanding, so.
So, in the water section, everybody go to chapter... Which chapter is that? It's really hard to find stuff on these little devices.
It is difficult.
Land use, circulation, open space, growth.
Water is, we're at chapter eight.
Chapter eight. So, how do we find that from our ability to get around in this document?
It's page 182 of the document.
182? Okay, and how to get there is, oh, over here, oh, you guys, you still have iPads. This is more difficult than the iPad sometimes. Okay, so, I can go over to page 82, and on your iPads, did you find it?
No.
Mr. Pratt?
I did find, though, what I referenced about the minutes. The council agreed to set the goal of lowering the GPCD by 5%. So, it seems to me that should be in there, if that's what the council agreed to. And again, I was, I had to be absent that night. I was on water.
So, it's not actually on page 82. That didn't work. So, I can't...
182.
182, okay.
Continue to write...
Oh, this is so small to see, too. It dries my eyes and it's... Okay, so, where could that be added? Under promote water, goal 8-4, promote water conservation, reclaim water, recharge and reuse. Is there some place that that could be added?
Yes, we can add that in there.
It's not that hard?
No.
Okay.
We'll just use the term, the 5%. I think there was some discussion...
There's actually goals in two.
...versus a percentage. So, we'll just use the percentage as a goal.
Okay, and it can just be put into the goal section, added to it?
And if it could be part of the motion requesting approval of the resolution, we'll have a record of that and make the change.
Okay.
So, is there anything else that we discussed that, you know, that was my pet thing? I don't know if other council members had anything else that...
I agree with you on that one, though. I think that's important, to show that we are serious about conserving water and not just talking about it.
And that's a great thing. I mean, it just adds to the 25% that we've already reduced our usage. So, 5% more doesn't hurt, as long as we can keep liquids in our wastewater plants and...
Love extra to send to Clarkville every now and again.
Yeah. Okay, so, I would entertain a motion, Mr. ... And the public, yeah, the public got to speak. So, Mr. Pratt?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2746, and amending it by adding that we will set the goal of lowering the GPCD by 5%.
Second.
Okay, so, Mr. Pratt made the motion, and Mr. Ilinski seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And it's the council's recommendation that the city manager consider giving Charlie a few hours off for all his work. Give him a break. We appreciate... I was just, I was sort of making a joke. I said, "It's the council's recommendation that the city manager consider giving Charlie a few hours off," as thanks.
Friday at 5:00.
As thanks for all you did. So, we're just trying to say, "Thank you very much. You've had the public thank you for your work, and thank Barron for her work and support, and other staff members that may have supported you also."
And now, it is up to the public to decide?
Yes.
It's an unusual, unique thing that we have here.
Right, so, it will be their final decision through an election.
Yes, so...
And then, yeah, well, also, on the website, some of that needs to be updated. So, the dates, you know, we switched some dates around, and I'm not sure that we caught that, just in case someone checks.
Yeah, we'll definitely get that all set to the next level and have the final plan...
Because it will come up... Because it will come up again, it will come up again on the 17th to actually set the election, correct?
It does come back again in two weeks for the call of the election.
Okay.
And, but, work with IT to get all the right information.
Thank you. We appreciate that. So thank you again. It's been a long process, and we appreciate your work and diligence and smarts and all of those things to be able to do something like this. It's like, I don't know how you do it. Okay, so city clerk, please read Resolution Number 2746 by title only.
Resolution Number 2746, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, adopting the general plan 2025 as a general plan for the city of Cottonwood. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is application request from the city of Cottonwood's Police Department to exceed the city's presumptive 60-foot height limitation on cellular wireless communication towers to add a 20-foot addition to the Public Safety Communications Tower located at 199 South Sixth Street. And, excuse me, I got to get back over there to where we are. Oh, I am there. Okay, so we have Baron Najad, who is going to present this item to us. And could you grab the microphone, please? Thank you.
Thanks. This is design review, DR 14003, radio tower for the police department, 199 Sixth, South Sixth Street, and the existing police department. And Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item in May 19 meeting. And this is located, general area is Sixth Street and Aspen Street. And again, general zoning area is commercial and some residential. And subject property is right here. And as you know, we recently had modified our ordinance, section 404. And anything up to 60 feet is, from the ground to the top highest point of the antenna, is allowed. Anything beyond that, 60 to 90, if it is necessary, and applicant needs to bring that justification to the city council. And the process is, we go through the planning commission first, then come to you. Since we are working on this process ordinance, it is not the final yet. In general, public safety cases should be exempt from that. But in this case, we brought it before you. And this antenna was constructed in 2007. And this is a site plan, Sixth Street and Aspen, Aspen and Sixth Street, and the police department and fire department, this is all the way back in the backside of the parking lot and behind the building. This is the existing, existing antenna, tower located. Currently, it is 60 foot high. And these are the pictures from 2007 during the construction. And reports show that this tower was, the base was built to carry a higher antenna. One other thing I want to go back to, this site plan, and from the antenna to the Aspen is more than 135 feet. And from, again, antenna to the Seventh Street, it is more than 85 feet distance. These are the construction pictures. And this is the antenna today. Staff recommends approval, and this concludes my staff report.
Okay. Questions, council members? Mr. Pratt?
You know, we've, we've supported this, having this emergency dispatching center. We're starting to get other cities and entities that are trying to do this. So I don't know why we wouldn't approve this, so the system works efficiently. And I really think that's the main issue, is it's going to work much more efficiently than 2024 expected. And planning and zoning, I think, understood the importance of that and approve it. So I have no problem.
Yes.
Just to advise you and the council, as we are preparing over the course of the next couple of meetings or months, to bring you a performance of comprehensive, more detailed wireless communication facilities, ordinance from the general's ordinance. And within that, we discuss at the staff level, proposing that there be a limited, but something that would contemplate this public safety exception, so that they could exceed the presumptive limit up to a certain amount without going through this process. Just a heads up for you all.
And I did notice that quite a few of the P&amp;Z members were concerned about the city not following the same rules as anyone else. But that, I think, is the difference of being elected and not elected, but appointed, because as elected officials, we understand public safety. And the fact is, is that it is our responsibility to ensure that our public is safe. And so we have a little bit more responsibility as elected officials to ensure that. And because of public safety, I understand the request.
That's, that's where I'm at.
Comments from members? Any comments from the public on this item? Okay, so I would entertain a motion in that case.
I will make the motion.
Okay.
To, to accept the recommendation of our Planning and Zoning Commission and approve the request from the city of Cottonwood Police Department to exceed the city's presumptive 60-foot height limitation on cellular wireless communication towers by allowing a 20-foot addition to the existing police department tower located at 199 South Sixth Street pursuant to section 404 H8B. Thank you, city attorney, of the city's zoning ordinance.
I would go ahead and second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So the motions were made by Mr. Ilinski with the mayor seconding. Okay, the next item is claims and adjustments.
Move or pay the claims?
Take it.
The vice mayor made the motion. Councilmember Howdigy seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is executive session, annual review of the city manager pursuant to ARS 3843103A1. The council may vote to convene into executive session, subject to the city manager's right to compel the council to discuss this matter in open meeting. And I sent the normal letter that we send to all of our employees, and he will not compel us to hold it into an open meeting and would agree to an executive session. So with that, I make a motion to resolve into executive session.
Second.
The mayor made the motion. Councilmember Pratt was louder. I don't know if he was first.
Oh.
Councilmember Pratt seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we would resolve into executive session.